Rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves to you as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who've placed their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead and for everyone gathered here tonight to be a stabilizing influence in these unsettled times. Oh Lord, bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So before we get to the roll, I guess we have the public hearing. And all persons, of course, are reminded that the session's being recorded on tape for the preservation of records. You're asked when called upon to give your name and address and interest in the matter before the council. That matter is the discussion of ordinance 547, which is uses and conditions in a BL, which is a business local, and a BG, which is a business district, business general districts. Does anybody want to talk about that tonight? I didn't think so. All right, we'll close the hearing and roll right into the town council meeting. So now we'll start with the roll.
Okay. Mayor Nevin.
Here.
Councilwoman Barrett.
Here.
Councilwoman Painter.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Unglesby.
Here.
Councilman Zelman.
Here.
Good, thank you. Minute approvals for the council meeting on February fourteenth.
So moved.
Take your pick. Any comment? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, Tammy, when you're ready, staff report.
I'd have a reminder that the 2023 town election will be held in Town Hall on Tuesday, May ninth, from seven AM to eight PM for two members of council and a mayor. All terms are for four years. If you are a registered voter in Carroll County and live within the incorporated town limits, you are eligible to vote in town elections. If you are not registered to vote, you may do so online by visiting Carroll County Election Office, excuse me, by visiting Carroll County Elections Office at elections.carrollcountymd.gov. Or you can call the Elections Office at 410-386-2080 to request registration forms by mail. Voter registration must be completed by April tenth.
And candidate registration, right?
Yes.
Down here further, sorry.
That's all right.
I'm getting ahead of you.
So nomination packets for residents that would like to run for office are available at Town Office. Candidates must be 25 years of age, a registered voter, and have resided within the incorporated town limits of Hampstead for at least one year immediately preceding, wait a minute, let me try that again.
Yep.
You got it. Proceeding the election.
Okay, right, okay. Well, they have to live, they will have had to live within town limits for a year preceding. Never mind, it's been one of those days, I'm sorry.
It's the time change.
Woo. Candidate must follow a nomination packet with the town by four thirty PM on Monday, April tenth, 2023. Absentee ballots will be available after the Board of Supervisors of Elections validate the candidates. The May council meeting will occur the following evening on Wednesday, May tenth, at seven thirty. Just some announcements of town services and facilities. Bulk trash is next Saturday, March eighteenth. Yard waste pickup begins on Monday, April third. Please do not dispose of leaves or grass clippings in the roads, storm drains, or any other stormwater management facility. Town Hall will be closed for the Good Friday holiday on Friday, April seventh. Our commercial and residential projects continue to move forward. We continue to work with several different site plans and business prospects. Town staff have had several meetings with developers, engineers, and county staff pertaining to these different projects. When the plans are more definite, the details will be made available. And for our finance department, staff are working on the preparation of the FY twenty-four budget. A pre-construction meeting for the North Water Tower project was held on Wednesday, March eighth. To prepare, to prepare for the project, Public Works intends to drain the tower during the last week of March. Then a contractor plans to begin work on Monday, April third, weather permitting. The project should take approximately six weeks to complete. Staff attended the bid opening for three turf mowing bills, bid, excuse me, bids on March seventh, and the request for approval to award these bids is on the agenda for tonight. And the bid opening for the solid waste and recyclables collection service, services was held on Thursday, March ninth, and that bid will be presented to council at the next council meeting in April.
Before you go on, the North Water Tower, so are we going to run the wells a little bit more to keep the pressure up for the north end of town?
So, yeah, we'll be probably going two times a day pumping cycle versus a one. It will reduce the, you won't see reductions in pressure, you'll see reductions in volume. So, most people, ninety-nine percent of the time, will have no idea that it's, we're down one.
Okay.
Pregnant Mid-Atlantic Utilities is completing the pipe removal and replacement project along South Carroll Street and Shiloh Avenue. So just please use caution when traveling in that area. And then town staff continue to have monthly meetings with our consultants to discuss the status of the engineering design for our water system centralization project.
Questions for Tammy? All right, oversight, Diane.
Okay. The Hampstead Farmers Market Advisory Team met on March sixth. Market Manager Keith Johnson advised that fifteen vendors have committed to the 2023 season so far. Our goal is thirty to thirty-five vendors. Renewal applications have been sent to our existing sponsors, and we are always welcome to, to welcome new sponsors to the market. Our public relations volunteer Gary Lee has already begun a series of Facebook posts spotlighting the sponsors and vendors who have signed on for this year. So keep those vendor applications and sponsorships coming in, and you too will also be featured in an upcoming spotlight, spotlight post as well. I'm having one of those days too.
It's contagious.
Gary shares these posts from the Farmers Market page to the various community pages, so they are seen by thousands of area residents and are great exposure for your business. Lastly, we are now down to two open slots for our musicians. Please contact us via the website or Facebook page if you are interested or know somebody else who would be able to fill those slots.
Look forward to June fourth?
First Saturday, June third?
Third, there you go. Thank you. Wayne?
Hampstead Train Station, June tenth is going to be opening of Music in the Park. Middle Sister will be playing our opening. I have all but one band booked. Bands that I've sent out aren't available on July eighth, I think it is. So we're still trying to get somebody for, for that one date, and then we'll have the whole slot available and out on the website. Tree Commission met on March eighth. We're planting our spring tree planting, it's going to be at Westwood Park. We're going to do it on four twenty-two, which is Earth Day, and we'll be planting some trees on Wesley Court, some areas just off Wesley Court.
Great.
And plus, we'll be taking all the sleeves off the trees that have survived and done well over in Westwood Park, not, yes, no, North Carroll Farms Four, yes.
That's a few.
Yep.
Deb?
The Planning and Zoning Commission met on Wednesday, February twenty-second. A public hearing was held for the discussion of the concept site plans for Hans Hampstead property, which is parcel three zero seven nine Hampstead Mexico Road. There were quite a few comments, all positive, welcoming Hans to the Hampstead community. The zoning administrator advised the commission that the adequate facility studies were completed and no inadequacies were discovered. The property complies with all codes as well as the comprehensive plan. A new fence and gravel parking pad was approved at ten thirty South Main Street. The commission discussed ordinance five forty-seven, which amends chapter one thirty-five, articles twelve and thirteen regarding the uses in the B dash L local business and B dash G business general districts. This will bring the code up to date, adding items such as dog groomers, craft shops, artisans. The commission is recommending to council the adoption of ordinance five forty-seven. The commission also discussed the draft for chapter seven of the 2022 Hampstead Comprehensive Plan, which entails community facilities. And Andrew Gray reported that the Carroll County Department of Planning continues to review the transportation master plan.
Good to hear Hans is finally in.
I know, it's very exciting.
There were at least a half dozen recommendations that that be a convenience store, gas and go, but we never thought that was an appropriate use for that site. Happy that it's being put to use. Dave?
Okay. I want to thank the Northern News for a nice interview and front page story they put out this past week, allowing us to update the gardens at the Richard Family Cemetery. This keeps the project in the mind of the public, and today I had two individuals who read the article and reached out to me who want to donate some stuff to the project, so it's good stuff. Also, several businesses have reached out to me recently too to donate some items as well, and this is already the fifth season that we've had the garden planted, and it's getting larger every season. Next month I'll have an update on what was donated and recognize the businesses and the members that have, have donated. Last night I was at the Main Street Committee meeting along with some town staff attended, Tammy, and we have some several ideas we're looking at for Main Street. We're looking at possible benches, trash cans, et cetera. Also, we're looking forward to our Fall Festival to be held at the War Memorial Park in the, in the fall. Speaking of the War Memorial Park, I've also received, someone has given me a large donation of native plants for the beds in the War Memorial Park. Also, some people have reached out to me who want to help plant that, so I'll be reaching out to Kevin and coordinating that, and we'll be getting that done probably in the first of April. This week we'll be attending the MML Dinner, and I'll have an update on the Summer Conference Planning Committee report for you. And finally, I just want to bring up the MML Scholarship again for Carroll County. I want to thank Judy again for all of her help in getting this organized and out again this year. Again, this is open to any students who live in a Carroll County municipality and attend high school here in Carroll County, of course. The Carroll County deadline for this will be April twenty-eighth of 2023, and we're giving out three one thousand dollar scholarships.
Excuse me, you're giving out four.
No, that was, that's the MML.
Yes, ma'am, for the town, but yes, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your support with that. But yes, this will be, this will be going on then, and you can actually get this form through the Hampstead Facebook, website page here. So thank you.
There's three for Carroll County Maryland Municipal League, and we're doing four.
We have seven.
As a town itself, it's all, it's all good. Seven in total, so that hopefully helps seven worthy individuals in the next step of their career.
And I've already had, several students have reached out to me to find out what they had to do, so it sounds like this year we're getting a lot of people coming, so this is good.
Good. Finally, last but not least, Ben?
Okay, so for February last month, the average water usage was three hundred twenty-six thousand gallons per day, and so far for this month is three hundred twenty-nine thousand gallons per day. Rainfall total for February was two point one five inches, and so far for March is one point two one inches. Special thanks to Christina and Jim for preparing slides for the website to help answer questions from our customers after EPA sets the proposed MCL, which is the maximum contaminant level for PFAS. The EPA released those proposed limits today, so we will be monthly, the town staff has been meeting with our consultants, and they're going to continue to talk about if our proposed plan will work. The limit is for parts per trillion, which is four nanograms per liter of water, which is, it's not a lot.
No. Or parts per trillion.
That's what I said, four parts per trillion.
Not per liter.
There's four nanograms per liter.
Nanograms, you give it to you nanograms.
Okay. That makes it sound too small. It's one drop of water in an Olympic sized bowl.
Anogram is very small.
They really want it to be zero.
Yeah.
That's all I have, but the town staff will keep meeting with consultants.
Yeah, so that, yeah, what Ben was just referring to, there it is.
Just came out today.
It came out in writing today, and so their proposals for parts per trillion, hopefully we can keep it there, if not bump it higher, but most of the, most of the, the comments are to make it less, and we are impacted by it, and so that's why there's a lot of engineering work going on to overcome it. So it's just things that come from outside of the world that we have to deal with. All right, with that, Chief, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I believe I'm on.
Yep, now you are.
With reference to traffic safety during the month of February, we investigated three reportable accidents, two minor property damage only, and two crashes took place at the forty-two circle. Speed signs were placed at eight locations for a total of sixty days of display, and we continue to focus as much as possible in the school areas. Traffic enforcement included forty-seven selective enforcements that were conducted over just under twenty-two hours worth of activity, thirteen citations, twenty warnings were issued during those activities, and there was one arrest for DUI. Overall, traffic enforcement included sixty-two citations, one hundred and seventy-five warnings. We conducted five hundred and seventy-seven patrol property checks of businesses and schools with reference to serious crime. We investigated three DUIs, two assaults of the second degree that were domestic violence related, two open warrants, two burglaries of the fourth degree, and four thefts. Arrests included three adults taken into custody for DUI, four adults for various traffic offenses, one adult for a theft, and one adult for a second degree assault. In the training department, we conducted thirty-one hours of training. Topics included police misconduct, complaint process, and discipline matrix. I attended that down at the Training Center in Sykesville, and what that refers to is the new requirements under the police accountability that involve the police accountability board as well as the administrative charging committee. There's been a lot of discussion with that, it's certainly been the paper as well. The county has selected their folks, they're in the process of going through training. We had our second formal meeting last week. I think it's moving along at a good process. There's some good selections on there, people that are interested. I think it's going to be a positive thing, but as a result of it, there's additional training that we need to have and how we're going to handle disciplinary issues related to that. So that's what that refers to there. We also included our basic firearm safety course. We conducted an active shooter training. Ms. Geiger completed an intro to Microsoft Access Use, and we also completed our annual firearm qualifications for both handguns, rifle, and shotgun during the month of February. Community events included, we attended the Roberts Field HOA meeting. Unfortunately, Officer Bachmann is currently, currently out on Mike duty, he was injured during the course of taking a person into custody. But the positive thing for that is we were able to put him over at Hampstead Elementary for three days for a read across the mark, and I think he read to every kid in that school at some point in time. Tons of questions, tons of feedback, everybody had a good time.
What did he read him?
He read, I'm going to mess up the name of it, Sincerely Emerson or Emerson Sincerely? It's almost, it's a story about a girl writes a letter thank you to the post office, and it grows from there. Apparently it's a real story, it took place in South Dakota. He is the expert on that now, not me. But he had a lot of fun, a lot of positive feedback. We always have a good time over there, for what it's worth. I'm going to add lip here a little bit, even though technically it would be on next month's meeting, we actually did participate in the HMA Biz Bowl. We had a ringer, unfortunately we only took second, from what I understand. We lost to the bowling alley itself.
That's a ringer team.
I thought we were good, to be honest with you. But anyway, it seems that it was a positive night, everybody had a good, a good time. Two additional things, or one additional thing I'm going to put in there is we actually have two new folks with us. Casey Mann, he comes to us from Prince George's County. He's going through our two-week in-house training session that we had, and he'll start his field training next week. He's, has eight, almost nine years' experience with Prince George's County. He's a local guy, born and raised here in Hampstead, he lives up in Manchester. I think he's going to be a good fit, we're looking forward to getting him out in the, in the field with us. And Jesse Burris started the Police Academy on Monday. He comes to us from the Frederick County Sheriff's Office. Actually, he came to us after speaking to Spitzwell. They worked together in the jail. He has since retired from the jail and he started at the Police Academy, so he's looking for a different career, he's excited, you know, he's having a good time down there. It's only his first week, but I think he's going to be a good addition as well. And that would be our report. Any questions?
Yep. I had the pleasure of swearing in Casey, we'll do it publicly later, but.
We will, we will. And typically the, we like to do the badge ceremony, everybody has seen us a couple of different times. Our tentative plan is to do one for the.
April.
It just takes us a little while to make everything fit, and it wasn't going to work on this timeline, just in that time, but we'll do.
And I'm real, I mean, so that's our fourth local person that's on the police department, born and raised in Hampstead, so that's, I think, positive because they're vested in the community. Not that the others aren't, like, you know, Stacy's come fully vested after twenty-four years, so the chief after just a mere three and a half or four. So, what are you up to, three and a half already?
Four.
Feels like.
So, busy times, always. Any questions for the chief? Thank you. My report, Maryland Municipal League, we're still in session, I think we're a couple of days from Crossover Day. We're, in order for a bill to be considered, apparently it has to be either passed in the House or the Senate for the other chamber to consider it. So the number of bills that are being introduced for the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee to Review has diminished, but we're continuing to track the ones that we either support or we wanted to amend or we opposed. Many of the ones we opposed are in conflict with home rule here, there's a lot of, it seems, push to take things that would be done by planning and zoning here locally and sort of put them on a state level, and there's one hundred fifty-seven towns that would disagree with that opinion. Also attended the mayor's conference down in Annapolis last month, it was a good meeting amongst the mayors, a lot of conversation about the economy, which has been very interesting even just in the last couple of days, as a banker here, and, and then also about various First Amendment rights, which was pretty, pretty eye-opening. So it was a good meeting by all. Also attended the Maryland District Five slash Forty-two meeting in Annapolis, since we're not just in District Five anymore for Carroll County, we also, you know, we are in a sliver of District Forty-two, which is Baltimore County, so all the representatives, the state senators, and the delegates were there. Diane was there with me, so that was a good night, very well attended. I don't think Tammy mentioned, but the newsletter will be out next week, so I got my article done. It looks good, it's full of information, so I hope you take the time to read it, it'll be both online and delivered to every house. And then if you haven't noticed, Tammy didn't mention, but the signs that she mentioned were coming and coming and coming and coming, are here.
Some things had to be worked out.
They're here, at the, both the north end and south of town, so, you know, they look pretty good, there's a little work that needs to be done on the north end to clean it up just a touch, but.
That's, that's going to be scheduled for next week.
Very good, but definitely an upgrade and a sign of the times that they have been upgraded, pun intended. So, you know, hopefully you take the time to notice them, and I think we'll have a little picture of them in the newsletter next week as well. So that's it for my report, I don't have anything for unfinished business. The new business is primarily in a word of a contract for town, town mowing. We have three different bids. One is for water facilities. You can see that two of them were close, and then one wasn't. And so for the water facilities, we're recommending Precision Property Services obtained the bid, it was a three-year total of thirty-one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, the next closest was thirty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty, so an eight thousand dollar difference. The third bid was eight, over eighty-five thousand dollars, so I don't, you know, the price of their gas must be based on premium. But in any way, I would make, recommend a motion to accept Precision Property Services to do the water facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the next bid was for the government buildings, parks, and common areas, and it was the same three bidders, this time it's Myers Lawn Care who's done it for the last five years? Three years, so this will be their second.
I'm sorry.
So let me astray there, so it's, it's their second time through, you can see their bid was seventy-six thousand five hundred versus the next eighty-one five, which was Precision, and the other one was over two hundred thousand. So make, make a recommendation to accept the Myers Lawn bid for the government buildings, parks, and common areas.
So moved.
Second.
And a second by Deb. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And finally, we have the Stormwater Ponds and Facilities, and it's the same three bidders with Myers Lawn at sixty-three five, Precision Property Services at sixty-four, so very close, and cutting edge at a hundred and eight. So, and we recommend that we go with Myers on that for sixty-three five.
So moved.
Second. A second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Take care of the business of government, and our lawns will be mowed this year, lots of grass to cut. Finally, under ordinances and resolutions, we have the adoption of ordinance five forty-seven, which is the uses and conditions in the BL and BG business zones, which we had that very ever-so-brief public hearing on, and a motion to adopt the ordinance five forty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Ordinance is adopted. Last but not least, public comments. Ms. Donnelly, I hear you want to make a comment.
Yes, I love your epic comment.
That's fine.
Ms. Tammy, I'm going to request that you help me.
Okay.
Is that, mic's still on? Just tap it.
It's about to be.
It's on, I see a green light.
Mayor Nevin, members of Town Hall, gentlemen, I don't know your name, Chief Snyder, Lieutenant Stacy, Ms. Judy, Mr. Kevin.
Mm-hmm, you got everybody.
I'm here this evening. It's a great pleasure for me to do this, to welcome someone new to our community, and especially someone who is in a pivotal position in this community, because I reside in a community within much larger community.
That you do.
So, Mrs. Lisa Wallace, if you would come join me, please. Mrs. Wallace is the new property manager of the Hampstead Village Apartments. This woman is completely charismatic.
Unlike you.
No. I'm not charismatic, I'm not modest, nor am I humble. I do not take any credit for those things, but I do admire them in others. And she is the new property manager, Mrs. Teresa McFadden, who was with us for six and a half years, very much loved, very much respected, left, took a position closer to her home, and I think you all know, especially Lieutenant Stacy and Chief Snyder know how I felt about Mrs. McFadden. And I can say today that she and I are still in correspondence, and as the mayor knows, I love to write letters.
Yes, you do.
And the thing of it is, most people answer them back.
As they should.
Yes, as they should. And I was just so immediately impressed with this woman, with her style, her grace, and her commitment to the town's residents, and we are a large part of this community. And I'm actually engaging myself more within the community of the Hampstead Village Apartment Complex, which actually I enjoy doing, I'm always like it when I'm right. And so I have found out that there's just a lot of activities that a lot of people are participating in, we're doing some good things up there. So I wanted to welcome Mrs. Wallace, and I wanted her to meet all of you, and I want to especially say about the Hampstead Town Hall. I call there probably about once a month, just to chit chat and see what's going on and make sure that you all have nice pastries, and.
Much appreciated.
Even gluten-free ones.
Yeah, even gluten-free ones, you know? That's kind of important to know as a retired nurse, what people can and can't eat. So, and everyone has always been very positive and has always, I don't want to say met my challenges, but has delivered on them. And I always try to do what I think is best for the community. I always feel that when you leave a community or you enter a community, you assess it, you decide where your strengths are, and when the time comes to leave, to move on, either somewhere on earth or up in heaven, you leave that community better than what it was. So I promise I will not speak French, but I have that all planned in case you want to hear it. Ms. Tammy, could you help me with this?
Sure.
So.
Careful, it has water in it.
Mrs. Wallace, this is from the town, and from especially the residents, and it is predominantly yellow, and yellow is the color. And yellow is the color of welcome.
I really appreciate that.
So I wanted you to have this and we are so grateful to have you. And I think you're going to take the apartment complex in a great new direction.
That is my intent.
Well, if that's the intent, your intentions are moving in a very positive manner. And it's my pleasure to introduce you to our community. And I think the wonderful thing about this community is that you're, you're meeting everyone. I lived in Baltimore City for thirty-five years and.
Which neighborhood? Which neighborhood?
Roland Park. Two one two one oh.
I'm one, I'm one one.
Mm-hmm. And I don't think I ever, I think the only time I called the police was about three o'clock in the morning on a Saturday when I heard a car crash at the intersection of Thirty-Ninth and University Parkway. I was on the sixteenth floor, I don't think I could have made it down there in time to do anything. And I think that was about the only time I ever called the police to intervene in anything. So I think everyone knows how I feel about the Police Department here. I mean, I think everyone knows how I feel about everything.
Yes, we do.
I'm an open book.
Yes, you are, it's very much appreciated.
And I'm not ready to be closed yet. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And I, I just am delighted. And if Teresa McFadden, she, she raves about you.
I spoke with her earlier.
Ms. Wallace, where are you coming from, which, which, where were you for this?
I will, I will. Baltimore City.
What part?
Near Morgan University.
Mm-hmm.
Two one two three nine.
I used to work at doors, right next door to Morgan.
Okay.
It's a nice.
I got my masters in two one two three nine.
All these zip codes. Very nice. So, and you, where do you live?
I live in three nine.
Okay, so you're making the reverse commute.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we look forward to it.
We're all very familiar with that.
We look forward to you, you know, being a part of our community and welcome aboard. Welcome.
Very welcome. And please call if you ever have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donna, appreciate that. Any other comments? Good, David? All right.
Well, I just want to say I'm really thrilled to see all of the new businesses that are coming to Hampstead. I think in the past month, we've had about half a dozen new businesses open their doors. Two in Roberts Field, Cinco de Mayo Restaurant and Domingo's Paws, which is a dog grooming and self-serve dog wash. New coffee shop opened up at, what, one thousand five South Main, Fika Coffee Shop. I haven't made it there yet, but it's like.
Where is that?
It's a, it's at one thousand five.
Corner of Lord Beckley, Zillan Main.
It's where, it's where Chef Jeff Experience used to be and before that it was Daughter's Cafe. So I think they just.
Now, did he move on to something bigger and better?
What, Chef Jeff?
Yeah.
They ended up, they ended up, they moved and then they closed, so they went out of business unfortunately.
He seemed to have a lot of activities.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the coffee shop just opened, I haven't made it there yet, but it's on my list. Rocco's Italian Market and Deli, they're really booming, they're right across from Outlaw BBQ, same ownership. And I mean, they're, they're, those, both of those businesses are doing fantastic. And then up on the north end of town, across from Roofright, is Maison Green, which is a coffee shop and wine bar. So lots of, lots of exciting things happening and, you know, I, I can't recall ever having that many businesses open up all at one time.
Well, and I can tell you the other businesses, like, and I can never say this, the Country Pet.
Country pup.
Thank you, Country Pup Pet Spa, she was thrilled to have another groomer open.
She was so busy.
Yeah, she said she was having a tough time finding.
And, you know, it would take, you would call because it would take two months to get an appointment, so you'd make an appointment. It's, so she's thrilled to have another groomer in town.
That's good.
So I think everybody will complement each other.
I had Cinco de Mayo for weekend snack this, this weekend, it was great.
A weekend snack?
The whole weekend?
They give you so much, I ordered the food on Friday and there was so much, I could still have it on Saturday.
That's more like it.
One of my coworkers goes there for the margaritas.
Just don't forget about Luna's hole.
All those, all those businesses are referenced in the next newsletter coming out next week, so we didn't, we made sure that they're all highlighted, so.
But we did, we did have a contractor that was here for the Hans meeting from Wicker Sham and they went out to see in our pub because it was a fundraiser for the fire department. And, and they just couldn't believe how many restaurants Hampstead has, so that's a good thing.
We apparently like to eat out a lot.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all good news, with one exception, but motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all.